I now call the order to regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, January 21st, 2014, at 6:30 roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Tierpenny.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Jack Long of Regional Medical Center. I'll be on that point. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day to serve you and others. These are met here tonight for the betterment of the community. Give them wisdom to confront the challenges. Grace in our relationships. Thank you for the progress of the past, the work of the present, and the hope of the future. May Tarpon Springs know your blessing, prosper, and be an example to other communities. We thank you for your servants that are here tonight. Protect those who protect us. May you pour out your blessing upon our great nation that lives under you. Bless the mayor, each commissioner, each officer. May each one of us know and do your will tonight. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clear reason and justice for all. We will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. You have something, please go to the podium. State your name and address for the ruckus. You're given up to four minutes.
My name is Harry Batius. I live at 46 Reed Street in Tarpon Springs. And I'd like to speak to the same issue I spoke two weeks, spoke about two weeks ago, the proposed changes at the sponge docks. I won't be here in March and April and May, and so I want to get my two cents in now while I can before you folks make a decision on how to spend this money. Last time I talked about the incompatibility of having a brick street on Dodecanese, the incompatibility with the night in the islands and the Greek dancing that's such a significant part of that event. The other thing that occurred to me about a brick street is, I live on a brick street. Reed Street's got bricks in it and it's fairly smooth, but you know what? It's one of the few smooth brick streets in Tarpon Springs. If you ride alongside St. Nicholas Cathedral between Saford and Pinellas, it's just like a roller coaster. Same thing is true on Tarpon Avenue between Pinellas and the Bayou. And the same thing applies to Cedar Street between Pinellas and Athens Street. And I grew up on the Cape Fear River in North Carolina, and I can tell you when that river flooded and the brick streets down in the old part of town, very often the bricks would just lift up and float away. And the city spent many occasions and lots of money to repair that. My other concern tonight has to do with the amphitheater that's proposed for the docks. And I have to say then in reading the newspaper reports, I find an inherent contradiction in Mr. Hoffman's remarks about the amphitheater. On the one hand, he states that bringing back the brick street and the wooden docks would create a more original look, something similar to what existed in the 1920s. On the other hand, he suggests that novel features like the amphitheater would become over time a quote "wonderful part of the nostalgia of the next generation." This statement strikes me as being completely illogical in the face of his stated desire to have the docks look more like they did in the days of old. From my point of view, the only possible justification for an amphitheater or anything akin to it would involve its use as a site for regularly scheduled oral informational presentations, maybe one in the morning, one in the afternoon, whereby a knowledgeable speaker could conduct a program about the history of the sponge docks, its significance for this community and for our state and for the, for Greek heritage in America as well. In my mind, the overall proposal of all the transformation of the docks would be more appropriate if the docks were no longer a working waterfront. But the docks even today are still a working waterfront, and we must never forget that single fact. And we must also never forget that the sponge docks at Tarpon Springs are a unique place on this planet. In my life, I've been privileged to travel around the world, to Europe and Africa and Asia, and of course, in the United States. And I can tell you flat out, there's no place quite like Tarpon Springs in the, in terms of its atmosphere and its tradition and significance to Greek immigrants wherever they are throughout the world. When I left Boston 10 years ago, before I left Boston 10 years ago, I considered two places in Tar, in Florida to live. One was Apalachicola and the other was Tarpon Springs. And I came here for two reasons. One, because of its Greek heritage, and two, because of its proximity to a major airport like the one in Tampa, so that my friends and relatives could come and visit me regularly and I could get out of here regularly without having to drive from Apalachicola to Tallahassee or some other place. The final thing I want to say is this, as I said two weeks ago, before you commit this money, I want you to think long and hard about what's going on in the state with the flood insurance crisis. I don't think people are aware of how much this will affect our lives, not only the lives of people like myself as a homeowner here, but also the lives of the shopkeepers on the docks should this crisis not be settled. And the way things move in Tallahassee and in Washington, I don't expect any quick resolution to all of this. Thank you very much.
Is there some item that will not be discussed this evening?
Yes, regarding the resolution, is now the time to speak?
No, sir. If there are no other public comments, we'll go to consent agenda, excuse me, satisfaction release of leads, attorney fees, trash match, stand on, LLP invoice number 44387, Zenzao Law invoice 133, 13338, Louis Longman and Walker PA invoice December 4th, 2013, three is special events, food truck rally, merchants association February 8th, antique and treasures sale, Chamber of Commerce, February 8th, craft beer and barbecue festival, Rotary Club, March 7th, 4A PBA contract amendment, 4B salary adjustment, police administration, 5 is award file number 140032-N-JJ, single source purchase of legal and promotional advertising, 6 is authorized utilization of Florida State Contract number DMS-101111008C, mobile communication services, 7 is increased file number 130031CTK, purchase of Dell computing equipment through Florida State Contract number 250-WSCA-10ACS, 8 is authorized utilization of State of Florida Contract number 252-001-091, Microsoft license maintenance and services, 9 is authorized purchase of two Godwin DRI prime pumps through Florida Sheriff's Association Contract number 13, 13-04-09, 10 is extend file number 120120-C-JJ, landscape services. Any item that I'd like to pull? Any public comments in this item? Showed entertaining motion.
Move for approval, second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Next we have our special consent agenda, 11 is increased bid, increased RFP number 090100-P, job order contracted.
This, of course, is on special agenda because the amount of money, $400,000, that asks for additional, mainly this is extension of the contract for 90 days to complete the, the work on the Live Oak Saford project. Mr. Jakus and Mr. Functioner here for any questions, but basically, this is to complete that work and on that project and allow the money to do that.
If this is approved, how long will it be before that street is back open and everything?
We are hoping by the beginning of March. Are we still?
Sooner would be better, but we're conservatively, it's like the beginning of March, and as sooner as we can if possible. Any questions? Commissioner Tierpenny?
Thank you, Mayor. Just basically along the lines that you said. So we're amending this contract for $400,000, but also extending it for 90 days. And the 90 days is to enable us enough time to complete that intersection improvement. So, so, and an outside date would be May, as far as for that, for that construction to be complete. Since we're extending it to May 4th, I would assume that...
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll have it done and it'll be complete and operational earlier than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any public comments? Showed entertaining motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number 12, award bid number 140010-B-JJ, reclaim water system zone control valves.
And obviously, again, this is on there because of the amount, $400,000 for this. There any questions? Well, Mr. Robertson, I'll just answer that if there's any questions on it.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Robertson? Any public comments? Showed entertaining motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. We now go to ordinance and resolution, item number 13, Resolution 2014-03, interlocal agreement with Palos County Storm Water Pond.
Resolution 2014-03, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving the cooperative agreement between Pinellas County and the City of Tarpon Springs for resolving flooding issues in the vicinity of Earl Street and the Pinellas Trail, providing for the authorization for certain city officials to execute cooperative agreement and providing an effective date hereof. It's Resolution 2014-03 by title only.
Mr. Robertson.
Good evening. I'm Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager. As the resolution states, this item pertains to an interlocal agreement between the city and Pinellas County for expanding an existing city stormwater pond to alleviate flooding near Earl Street. The reason the county's involved is because Earl Street splits jurisdiction between the city and the county. This agreement includes a lump sum reimbursement to, to the city from the county for up to $85,000. That includes purchase of a vacant adjacent property and for the construction. This amount is expected to cover all of the city's, city's expenses for the project.
Any other questions for Mr. Robertson? Any public comments on this item? Showed entertaining motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item 14, Resolution 2013-63, development agreement for 601 South Walton Avenue property.
Resolution 2013-63, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving a development agreement for the sale of three, of a 3.46 acre parcel of land that includes 31,780 square foot assisted living facility, more or less located at 501 South Walton Avenue Ford, providing for findings, providing for conditions, authorizing execution of the development agreement, and providing an effective date. Resolution 2013-63 by title only.
Mr. Robertson.
Thank you. Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager. As you know, this is the development agreement for the proposed sale of the nursing home at 501 South Walton. What I wanted to do is just kind of briefly recap the project and what brought us here today. This, we've actually been working on this since May of 2012, in a phone call with the developer, the Bernard Group. They had recently, the year before, purchased the Sunset Harbor Assisted Living Facility located off of Chesapeake and had completely renovated it and inquired whether the city would be interested in entertaining the sale of the former nursing home for the same type of facility. So we had several discussions with them, and then in fall of that year, brought the idea forward to the Board of Commissioners. And at that meeting, it was decided that we really needed to reach out a little bit further and see any other interests that there might be for development of the property. So at that time, we issued requests for letters of interest, which basically was a nationwide search asking the development community, here's the project, here's the property, what would you like to do with it? Give us your ideas. From that, we had received three proposals. Two were for affordable housing projects, and one was for the ALF. Brought that back to the board, and then we got approval to do a full RFP, which is a request for proposals where we're asking for complete full applications. And we did the same thing again. We went to a nationwide search, and at that search, we got two responses, one again for an affordable housing project and one for the ALF. So those proposals were brought forward, and then ultimately, we selected the assisted living facility project. And I believe that was in, in August, was when that recommendation was made. And just to give you some of the reasonings for the project and a little bit of the benefits to the city from this project. Number one, it will fill a need for elderly care in our community. We have a growing elderly population, and there's a growing need in the elderly care community for memory care services. I found an article from Senior Housing News from last March, and it talked about, in the last three to five years, there's been a growing recognition that more and more Alzheimer's is becoming a number one need in the elderly care population. And it went on to talk about about 40% of ALFs in the future will likely need to have memory care within their services. The article went further on to talk about now that's been forecasted to be upwards of 80% now, that in the future, about 80% of ALFs will have to provide some type of memory care services. It further talked that there's no cure in sight for Alzheimer's, and that at some point, people who develop this type of disease will eventually end up in an ALF facility. So for us, that would mean residents can keep their loved ones here in the community if they would develop this type of, of illness, and that would be a help to us. There's also a lack of these types of facilities in Tarpon Springs. As you know, the, the Agency for Healthcare Administration regulates these types of facilities and requires any community that's in a coastal high hazard area, which we are, to provide facilities outside of the A and B flood zone areas. This one is in Zone C. Secondly, it's going to create permanent jobs for us. Again, the Agency for Healthcare Administration requires that a facility of this size to have at least 60, 60 jobs. The developer has proposed to be hiring at least the 60, but upwards of 100. And these will be wages that will run anywhere from the assistants to the ALF administrator, nurses, therapists, also jobs for local firms who are going to be supplying kitchen services, janitorial services, bed services, things like that, that will keep other local firms in business here. This is also a benefit to us. The facility is located within one of five at-risk zones that's been identified by Pinellas County. And that means having about 20% of the population living at or below 100% of federal poverty. Some of these jobs will be hired by people in that nearby neighborhood, many of whom would be able to walk to work. And then finally, the, the long and short-term revenues to the city. We've calculated based on what the facility had been, that it'll be about $50,000 in property taxes, that's total taxes, about $13,000 of that will come to the city. And then obviously, the one-time revenue of the sale, which has already been identified through an independent appraisal at $813,000. Then of course, there'll be subsequent development and other building-related fees that will be generated as well. And then finally, the revitalization of the neighborhood. As you know, it's been vacant since 2005. It's been deteriorating, so it would be a benefit to the property values in that area which are declining. Putting it back on the market, getting it in use will really help to stem those declining property values and hopefully see an increase in the values in that neighborhood. And so we began negotiating the development agreement with the board's approval in the fall. Terms were brought back to, I believe, in November. There were changes made to them. Purpose of the development agreement, again, is to provide some safeguards and protection to the taxpayers upon the sale of the property. Back in December, we brought back the agreement again. It was approved at that meeting. The city attorney then drew up the contract, and we brought that to the planning and zoning meeting of January 13th. That was passed unanimously, and now it's being brought to you for the final and second public hearing. In your backup materials, you have the staff report, you've got the agreement, and again, the full proposal, which outlined what the developer proposes to do. If you have questions, you've seen these in December. We didn't make any changes to what you had proposed to us back then. It's just in a different format for you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Robertson?
Commissioner Larson. Thank you. I don't actually have a question, I just wanted to make a, a comment. I know we've had this agenda item multiple times in different forms over the last several months. I just wanted to restate my ongoing concerns with this project. I'm concerned that we basically only had one proposal that we reviewed for this project. I'm concerned about the condition of the building and their choice to try to renovate as opposed to start over. As was stated by Ms. Lemmons, the, the building's been vacant for a considerable amount of time and has been deteriorating. And I'm concerned that this board really never did have a full discussion on what the best use of that piece of land would be. We basically received the one proposal and have been moving forward ever since. And I just wanted to again state those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item?
Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore Drive. When this came up to planning zoning, I started doing research. This company and this organization is a stellar organization in healthcare. And in memory issues and Alzheimer's, they have won outstanding, outstanding awards. I urge the commission to pass this. Let's get this piece of property elevated, give us something nice in the community. It's needed, and I think that we're going to be a star in the medical field with these people coming in and taking this facility over and doing what they need to do. If you go on the computer, you'll see outstanding reports on work that's been done, and we need to do this. Who knows? We may all be there one day playing commission, you never know. So it is a good proposal, it's been long coming, and I think this is the best that the city can do for the citizens of Tarpon and that piece of property. I urge you to pass it.
Joe Museo, 1319 Gulfy Woods Lane, Tarpon Springs. I ask the commission to pass this, this resolution. This is a win-win situation for the city. If you look at the proposal, this property's been in the hands of the city since 1995. Next year, the city will have this property for 20 years, which is absolutely nothing to, nothing's been done in 20 years, no one has made an offer on this property for 20 years. It's long enough, the city has owned it long enough without any revenue. We need to get this resolution passed, get some people in there, and make some tax revenues. Thank you.
There are no other public comments, show entertaining motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
No.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. We'll next go to item number 15, Resolution 2014-02, Department Reorganization Development Services.
Mr. DePauw, go begin with the presentation on this item.
Maybe the resolution, right?
Yeah.
Resolution 2014-02, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, providing for structural and organizational changes to the Development Services Department of the City of Tarpon Springs, approving the recommendation of the city manager regarding such structural and reorganizational changes and providing for an effective date hereof. Resolution 2014-02 by title only.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'd like to go through the reorganization plan you've been presented with this evening in the form of resolution. I'd like to start at the beginning, which is basically the, the plan is, is really intended to develop a way to continue to improve our operations while maintaining some budget restraints that we've obviously dealt with for a number of years. Really, two main objectives is to be more efficient and effective with our operations and to deal with the anticipated increase in workloads we've seen and we're going to continue to see. You know, as everybody knows, the economy continues to grow, and we've had a, just an absolute steady increase in development over the last several years. And together, that goes with permits and inspection that goes along with those. And when I talk about permits and inspections, I'm talking about for all types of development. And we expect that to continue. If I could, I'd just like to briefly go over some of the things that are on the horizon that we know about and we continue to meet with folks. We're expecting about 350 new residential units to be added to our existing inventory and a significant amount of non-residential development as well. From a residential standpoint, I would remind you of Tarpon Key, Keystone Ridge Estates, Townhomes at Brittany Park, Callistake, Ankle River Crossings, the Banyans, Ankle Bend, the Mango Circle redevelopment should the, the, the funding come in through the source they're, they're, they're seeking. And lastly, there's a development on Keystone Road we're meeting with some folks from the Barclay Group about. That's not including, obviously, the, the day-to-day permits we get for, for things throughout the week for, for smaller items. These are just the larger things we know are on the horizon. From a non-residential standpoint, we've of course got the alternative water supply project, about a $40 million project. We're going to be responsible for the, all the, all the inspections as that facility comes up out of the ground. Significant amount of money and time and energy will be invested in that. And then of course, we've got the downtown, the Forbes redevelopment, and that'll be a mixed-use property with all the historic aspects we've, we've talked about here publicly. We've got the Walton Avenue Assistant Living Facility Ms. Lemmons just spoke about if the referendum passes, which obviously is a significant project. We've got a potential fire station addition on the north side of the river, and we've been in discussions with the developer for removing and clearing the Days Inn and redeveloping that site into about a 60,000 square foot facility sometime in the future. So with all that being said, what we have is we've got a situation where we've got an inspection team, but under state law, only licensed building inspectors can do building and building-related inspections. This would include all the subject trades. At the moment, and all of last year, and pretty much has been the trend, the building and building-related inspections outnumber other inspections, engineer-related, that would be anything that do with utilities, trees, or anything outside of a normal vertical construction or a building as we know it. Just to give, give those numbers some perspective, last year, in our Nava Line session, which was... was our permitting program, there was roughly 5,300 inspections performed. Of those 5,300, nearly 4,940 were building-related. So, you're looking at a big difference in the volume that comes in. The best way to probably explain it is when you build a house, generally speaking, from an engineering and a site side, the inspections are just a handful while the building is going to be perhaps a couple dozen or more. And that's pretty typical with just about any project. What it comes out to be per day is roughly 21 inspections per day on a workday, of which 1.42 are engineering or non-building related. And so, when you look at a staff of basically three and a half, you can see when only two of them can do building inspections and two of them cannot, you do have a major problem with workloads and how to handle that. The figures I just mentioned do not include other ancillary inspections, such as housing property maintenance and code enforcement, because those don't go into our permitting. So, those would be in addition to the inspections I've just mentioned. And, of course, we expect that to certainly continue as development continues. At this time, from a staffing perspective, we have our supervisor of inspections. Most of you know who Mr. Mistraccio is. He is a part-time field inspector. He's in the office doing plan review, and we have one full-time construction inspector on staff to handle all the inspections I just referred to from a building side. Because Mr. Mistraccio is in the office doing plan review and meeting with designers and whatnot, he's only in the field part of the time. And so, really, with the demand, what's coming, what we've dealt with in the past year and what we're anticipating, we need to go ahead and combine the duties of all of our inspection staff and create a team that can do pretty much soup-the-nuts inspections for the city when they go out to a project site. And so, that's what we're heading for with the resolution. Let me be pretty clear here. There seems to be a lot of information that's been going around the next day. This plan creates four staff members who are qualified to perform all development-related inspections, building and engineering, including trees. I know there's been a concern that somehow trees are going to be lost in the shuffle here, and that's clearly not the case. You'll have four people on staff who'll be able to do that. So, tree protection and preservation is definitely part of the plan here, and I'll get into that in a minute. The new development inspector positions combine all the responsibilities of the current functions, and which I think we would all agree, based upon what I've just shared with you, that is an improvement over what we're doing right now. So, let me, if I could, I'd just like to go over the recommendations outlined in the staff report. We've created two job descriptions for development inspector one and two, and then three and four. We have done a salary survey, and we have taken the essential functions from the construction inspector, senior engineering technician slash city arborist, and the construction engineering inspector position and melded them into one position, putting it at two different levels. We've placed those in wage grades that we believe are commensurate with the skills, and we're recommending those job descriptions for approval as well as the salary wage grades that they're proposed in. Again, I would ask you to please, if you haven't had an opportunity to peruse through the job descriptions, to look at the essential functions for both. You'll see they clearly are a combination. Because the arborist issue continues to come up, I would share with you that we have at least two other members of our staff that are pursuing that certification. They've been doing that voluntarily for some time, which I think is an important thing. At the end of the day, I think we all realize, when you're in a small operation, you have to have everybody cross-trained. That is the goal. Also, the city works closely with other communities, and certainly, we can seek independent arborists should the need arise. The next recommendation is to essentially take the three current positions and eliminate those in the budget and replace them with the three development inspector positions, which, again, is the combination of all of three of the essential functions of those jobs. And all three of those inspector positions would report to the supervisor of inspections. Again, let me reiterate, we are not eliminating the functions of any existing position. The fact is, the new job descriptions effectively create more people to do the functions across the board. Third recommendation is to revise the supervisor of inspectors' job description. Obviously, the additional responsibility of overseeing two more employees. There has been a salary survey, and that salary has been recommended at a wage grade 23, and that the incumbent, Mr. Mistraccio, would receive a 5% salary increase for the additional responsibilities in accordance with city policy. As aside, Mr. Mistraccio has a great deal of experience in all areas of construction. His family ran a site construction development business and still does in Connecticut, and he did similar functions when he worked for the city of Pinellas Park for roughly, I believe, eight or nine years. He is also planning to become a city arborist. That is something he's discussed for some time now. We're recommending filling the three new development inspector positions as follows. According to our personnel rules, the positions will be advertised and filled by the most qualified applicants. Current employees will have an opportunity to compete and apply and compete for these positions. And should the three current position incumbents not be selected, in accordance with, again, our policy and our labor laws, we're recommending a six-week severance period after which their employment would be terminated. Let me talk a little bit about the recruitment. Again, I would ask you to look at, if you're looking at the job descriptions, look at the licensing requirements. We are looking for folks who have a level of license, either one, two, three, or four Because nobody holds these current jobs and has done these functions, they cannot be moved into these positions. Any person would have to compete. You're not required to have a license to apply. You'll notice that there's verbiage in there that says if you qualify for provisional license. These type of licenses, they'll allow a provisional license at the state level for up to three years. You have to fill out the paperwork and submit it. If it is approved, you can get a provisional license while you're waiting to take your test, which allows you to do the work, allows you to work and do the job. So, you don't have to have a... You don't have to have a license in hand from the state of Florida, but you certainly need to have the ability to apply and get a provisional license. From a fiscal standpoint, you'll see I provided a table one, which is our current positions and salaries, and then the proposed. Under the proposed, because all three positions would be filled, what I did was simply illustrated the midpoint of the higher of the two salary ranges, assuming you get three people that qualify under that higher range. I took the midpoint, and you can see there's a savings of about $7,500. I will say that, obviously, actual salaries, once you hire people, will determine what the actual cost will be, if any, to the general fund, but we're really not anticipating In summary, I'd just like to say that I think this plan is a practical and cost-effective approach. It meets our current and future needs. It improves the necessary leadership, optimizes services while maintaining staff numbers at a savings or at least no net effect on the general fund. I can assure you, we are committed to providing the best service we can and, you know, protecting the quality of life for our residents and our visitors. What I fear is, if these changes aren't made... I know each of you have probably heard concerns about the time in which things take to get through approval processes. That is a direct result of the staffing issues I'm discussing here this evening. I will be very candid about that. We simply do not have enough people to handle the workload. And, you know, we... Over the last 10 years, we've cut back. In the last four or five, we've really cut back, and now it is time to make some changes to make ourselves better. We've discussed the ability for online permitting, walkthrough permitting. All that is very doable. It's not doable with the staffing levels we have today, and it's very important that you know that. Should we continue on the trend we're headed, we will not only be able to not accomplish the things that I know everybody wants, but unfortunately, the length of time it would take to get a permit would probably be extended and increased, as well as we've always offered next-day inspections. And I fear that if the load on the one and a half people who are handling all the inspections gets too much, it's going to be second and third-day inspections, and I know none of us want that. We want people to be able to get the inspections they need, and we certainly understand when they're frustrated, when they can't, and we would love to provide them better service than we're providing today. And I believe this, and the city manager, I believe, agrees that this is the way to do it. With that, I will definitely stop. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer. I know there's a lot of folks and a lot of information you've provided. I hope I've answered some of the questions, and I'm available.
And let me supplement that with a phase two. I want to thank Mr. De Pasqua for the technical side, but I've got to step in and address especially what's been going on the last weekend with the emails, the phone calls, and everything that's been going on in these positions. And I'm going to divide it into three categories as a continuation of this thing. And the first thing I'm going to talk about are the jobs. And probably, that's the least thing that you've heard about, you've seen in the email as far as the technical aspects of the jobs and the need for those jobs. We have been doing, over the past three or four budgets, holding the line. We weren't laying off people in the worst possible times. We were cross-training. We've been doing every budget, different things to get by. There were pretty early indications that whenever things picked up, when building picked up, when things picked up, there would have to be some changes. And really, why you're seeing the last two reorganizations, the one previously we did for IT, and now this one, is because those were the two we knew from the very start were going to affect possibly people within the organization. So, I can say, in looking at the jobs, the jobs where I may be remiss is that both in IT and in this situation, I probably should have done this six months to a year ago, but because of the situation, because of involving people, we held out as long as we can. In IT, thank goodness, we got a new crew with the upgrade of positions, kind of similar to what we're doing here, and they're working along, but they are so far behind, and that was a result of waiting. In this case, everybody knows the number-one phone calls that all you get and that I get daily about inspection time, and whether it be people building new houses, whether people for roof inspections, whatever it is, you call me all the time. The people call me all the time, and we know that the one thing in our whole organization where we're not meeting the muster is, is getting the timely inspections out for all of this thing. And with this increased development coming, we are going to be underwater if we don't move fast and swiftly and have a team that is multi-trained, multipurpose, and licensed to do these things. I think one of the reasons you haven't heard a lot of dispute for that is because when we get the emotion out, when we get the people out, the facts, the numbers, there is no question on that. Obviously, you know all the calls you have got. So, this is something we need and have to do, and I've heard the other sides of keeping things the way you are and doing things, it will not work. This is a reorganization. We're stewards of the taxpayers' money. We need the best jobs possible to do the most and get the most out of this economy, and with everything coming in, with economic development direction bringing more in, if we want to keep pace, we have to make this, and we have to do it now because it probably should have been done six months to a year ago. That's the job. There's no other way around it, and obviously involves people and people in the organization longstanding, but, you know, it's something that needs to be done. The second thing I want to address real quickly, because one whole tangent of this thing has come out, that this is something that is going to affect the trees and the environment, and, you know, I've had people calling me all weekend, you know, saying different things about, you know, me and those things. Let me make this absolutely perfectly clear. Anybody who's going to get up and talk in citizen's comments about effects of trees and the environment, this proposal just absolutely does not know what they're talking about. From the time we began and when Commissioner Sanger was on board and we did a tree ordinance and we started working, there was a culture of this organization that changed and has evolved that has been very high on protecting trees and the environment, and not just one position or one half of a position or quarter of a position that's doing it. It's the institutional-wise, from the planner to the staff to the city manager, all the way through, that are involved in protection of the trees and protection of the environment. If you look out there and see the numbers of trees planted, if you look at what's been going on, you will see that. It's very clear. I'm very sure within next year, we'll be applying and hopefully getting awards from Tree City USA. The way to run the city and be concerned of trees and the environment is not to have one person or one partial person involved, it's to have a whole organizational structure that is concerned about that. We have that here. We have people on staff that can do tree inspections. There is no requirement that that be done by an arborist. There's no requirement that Tree USA, you have to have one. Now, I can assure you, in this plan and what we're going to do, and we plan on having two, three, four, maybe more arborists, you know, within a year or so in this process. If we ever have a gap where we don't have an official title license one, we will have the resources to have one on contract on something else, but although it's not needed, we will make that commitment to have that. But I can guarantee you, there's nothing... There is nothing out there to say that anything with the trees and the environment has changed. That's a complete falsehood. That's not true, and I think our track record, all we have to do is put that out there, and that takes care of that. So, that's not even the issue of this thing needs to be brought up. Now, the bulk of the comments are about the people. The unfortunate part is about one employee when this affects two or three employees, and that's who I have to deal with and be involved within there. And I can assure you, the one employee that most of the emails has been coming on, talked to before all this email and phone call trail, I talked to today, and those of you on the commission who have called me or the people who have called me, and I want to thank all the people who have called me. There's a lot of things that said and wrote things and not called me. I can tell you, everybody that has called me and that I explain things to has been satisfied. And I can tell you, yes, in the backup, you have the standard. When we do these reorganizations, we have, you know, what we offer to employ, but there is a... If there is a case where, for instance, in the email you got today from one of the employees that it needs to be made to May Spot to meet social security, or, you know, there's a retirement issue, which there really isn't because the eligibility for retirement from the city is immediate and now upon leaving, or any other concern that we need to look at the employees, that I will work with our labor people, our personnel director, and I will do whatever I can to make accommodations or severance as best I can in this process. We're not going to discard longtime city employees. We're not going to, you know, just, you're out the door, or even out the door in February. These jobs have to be advertised. They have to be interviewed. People have to give notices. Before the severance period, we even kick in under this present proposal, is months down the road. When you add that to the time of severance, to whatever I need to work out with the employee, we're at those timeframes, at least on the one. But you've got to remember, I have two other employees that I may need to deal with in this process, and, of course, we won't know that's in the process. But I assure you, as I have before, that I will work with them and try to present the severance that is... As long as the employee works with me, that is, as they're agreeable to both, but it is fair to both, and we will take those concerns into hand. So, I just wanted to add that to Mr. De Pasqua. And again, it's unfortunate, sometimes, in reorganizations, this has to occur, but if we want to move forward and serve the citizens, and, again, the citizens that are five, six times, all the emails you got, the people who have called, and about anybody who's got any inspections the past two or three years, you know the deficit we have in that area, and this is the way that we solve it.
Thank you for that, Mr. LaCourant. Sure, all of us have some questions from Mr. De Pasqua and others. This is one of those situations where I know I don't like to deal with... I don't like to deal with it from this perspective. When you make a changes like this and you've got individuals involved, it just... It muddies the water, you know? You try to separate issues from individuals, so it's not a reflection on the individual you're doing some things because you believe that this is what needs to be done, but this has gotten very muddied. And one of the things is, you talked about, if I can get some clarification on that, the provisional license. Is there anything that either the individual would have to do, that they have to meet certain qualifications to get those provisional licenses?
Yes, sir. There is...
There is, we're talking about, let's just, probably the easiest way to, to probably pick a category would be just an inspector category. There's a number of those categories listed in the state statute. You would fill out an application demonstrating a combination of education, training, and experience in one of those categories, and I believe the minimum is five years of experience. And then you send that up to the state, and you ask them, based upon your experience, to issue a provisional license. You're going to be hired by an organization, whether it be a city, a county, this is statewide. This is not Tarpon or even Pinellas County specific. So, yes, there is, you have to meet a certain eligibility criteria, but you don't know if you're really going to get approved until it goes up to the building, building code administrators and inspectors board. But you need to look at the criteria. If you can demonstrate the experience in one of those areas, then the likelihood that you'll get a provisional license is good. That provisional license does have a sunset. It is only for a finite period of time and will never be renewed. So, during that period of time, it becomes incumbent on that individual to then study, pass, and get what's called a standard license, which is a license that is with the individual forever. The provisional license will not travel either, so that employee could, let's say, get a one-year provisional, after six months decided to go to another jurisdiction, would not be able to take the provisional license with them.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is because, and I said, I really don't like really having to deal with this type of thing. I just tell you, just straight up, I don't like dealing with, because I don't like talking about employees and the rest of that stuff in this type of forum. I'd rather for it to be, have dealt with. But the other thing is, and the city manager talked about, that this should have been done six months ago, is that during that six-month period of time, that we inform any of these employees that there might be some changes, that they might need to do some things that will put them in a better position with some foreseeable changes.
Yes and no, and I have to be completely candid. Obviously, the details of reorganization are not discussed with an employee until the city manager has approved it. However, all three affected employees have been, have had this discussed with them. As a matter of fact, one employee is affected by this. You may recall, his job description was specifically brought back to the board to change to allow him to get his provisional license a couple of years ago. Unfortunately, he's been unsuccessful passing the test, but it did give him an opportunity to get the provisional license. Each year, when evaluations are done with employees, and the employees as a result of this, the three that we're talking about, each, each year, they're encouraged as a goal and objective to become cross-trained, to increase their base of knowledge, to make them more valuable, and I've preached this throughout the downturn in economy. I've had staff meetings in the morning with my office, and while I've never specifically said, there's an organization coming at the end of the year, because frankly, I never knew when this was going to come, I've made it very clear what needs to happen. So, I think that message was clearly sent, and whether or not it got the level of interest from the employee, I can't tell you, but it's something that was also documented with evaluations as well.
What do you, in your experience, look at as a adequate time to be able to get provisional license status?
The, the state, generally speaking, you, when you send up an application, a mayor, it takes about two to three weeks, I believe, before they, before they'll really act on it. They will accept it in, and generally speaking, they'll act on it within, within a 30-day period.
Okay.
And there's, as Mr. LaCouris said, there's plenty of time between tonight and when we would ever make a decision to hire anybody, because we do have a recruitment period and interview period and all of that, so.
And the reason I said that, I know we've gotten a number of emails specifically about one employee.
I understand.
But I know there are other employees that's involved, and my thought is that, you know, if we're looking at this from this perspective here, then what can we do in terms of making sure that, you know, employees that we have, that have been here with us and have been performing up to standard, whatever, you know, that was as far as their job description, would have that opportunity to remain with us, and that they're given adequate time to get those provisional licenses. That's first and foremost. The other part is that I know personally that from a permitting perspective, and, you know, really had to deal with it a little closer than I wanted to recently, is that something needs to happen, you know? I, there's no, it's in my, in my mind, that from a permitting perspective, that something needs to happen. And, you know, just the irony of this coming forward, because I've had numerous calls from contractors, and I tried to, you know, explain some things and pass them on and the rest of it, but sometime when you have that personal experience, it, it helps you to understand that, you know, there's a level of frustration. So, and I know within there, there's a level of frustration, and there needs to be some things that's done. But also, you know, I, I feel that, you know, anytime we're dealing with employees, we're trying to be as sensitive as possible understanding the situation. And that's why I asked in terms of how much time that we give individuals to make whatever changes they need to make, because after that's said and done, you know, as they say, everything continues to go on. So, I was, I'm still very concerned as far as, you know, making sure that any of the employees have adequate time as far as their provisional license, and that's one of the things that, you know, if this is approved, that, that goes forward. Not that, you know, there's going to be so much time, which I believe there will, anytime you advertise this many positions, that there's going to be some time in there for as applying and interviewing and the rest. We know we got a human resource position that's open right now, that's been open for a while. So, there's no guarantees that what is going to be, you know, six weeks, a month, two months, three months, how long it would take in terms of even trying to fill all these positions, but that there will be adequate time for any employee that chooses to, is to try to get those provisional licenses, you know? And that's, that's first and foremost. And as we continue to move, and we know, and I know that people out there are going to talk about, you know, the situation that lies with one employee and the rest of that stuff, and, you know, my thought, and I listened to the city manager, had a chance to talk with him, and I know there's been some way to talk and trying to work those things out so that we're not dealing with those type of issues publicly about, you know, employees. So, that's kind of where I'm at right now, open it up to commission.
And one thing, let me add to that.
Yes, sir.
Because I want to make it, make it perfectly clear, because I don't want anybody to, to have any misunderstanding, this come back later. The provisional license, the ability to get it, the applying for it and getting ready for the interview, you've got to remember, even if that present employee has those things or employee has license, they still have to compete for the job and be the best qualified for the job. I just want to understand it, just because they can go and get a license, you know, it's still the best quality when interviewed. That just gets them to the interview process and do it, but you still have to be the best person with the best capabilities for the job on there. I just want to make that clear. If it's a process where somebody's applied for a license and awaiting, and there's an interview process going, then, you know, there would be something we can do to interview pending that result of getting it. Obviously, if it didn't, if it wasn't gotten, then that would do it, but I just want to make, make sure nobody misunderstands that, okay, I've got a provisional license that is automatically a tool to get that job. They still have to compete and be the best qualified for the job.
Well, and I definitely understand that, but I understand this too, is that if I'm an employee, and I've been working for a company for X number of years, and I've done everything that you asked me to do, and I go out and I get a provisional license, I would assume that I have somewhat of, I would hope, a little edge in there. Now, if I'm going to get somebody that has, you know, a lot more experience in that area than I do, well, we're talking about three positions, so your odds should increase some to, that you have a fair chance. And this is what I'm talking about. I'm talking about fair opportunities, you know, to be able to retain employment with the city. That's, if that's the choice, which is why I asked about six months, because, you know, if you have six months and you didn't do anything, you know that things are changing, then, you know, that says something to me too. So, I, while I understand that there's no quote-unquote guarantee, but the, the odds are a lot better for individuals, not only here, but anywhere else, you know? I mean, this is thing that you're doing to better yourself in that area, so, but with that, Commissioner Lawson.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask. One was just kind of a follow-up to one of the mayor's questions. How long does the provisional license last? I heard one year, is it, is it a one-year?
Actually, the, the building code administrator inspectors board has discretion between one year and three.
Say that again, between one and three?
Between one year and three.
Got you.
I believe three statutorily is the maximum.
I see. I noticed when looking at the job descriptions, certified arborist is listed as an additional desired certification, and I was wondering why it fell there as opposed to a required certification? And a related question too, that would be, if this reorganization is approved, is there a position which, which has a requirement that you are a certified arborist?
The, the reason it's not in the required is because the required is what's required under state statute. There is no requirement by law, ordinance, or otherwise that you be an arborist to work as an arborist. It's a voluntary program. Best way I can explain it is, is the city has a floodplain management program. We all heard about flood insurance. I'm a certified floodplain manager. It's not a requirement of my job, it's something I chose to go through, and as such, I have that certification and designation. That would be the same thing. Again, we're going to encourage all four positions, Mr. Mistraccio, as well as the, the three development inspector positions, to become certified, but it's listed under additional, like the other category, the other, the other ones that are listed in the first bullet, those are because they're not mandatory, but they're certainly desired.
I, I understand. So, we're, it's not mandatory by law. We're not required by law to require anyone to be a certified arborist, but I presume as a city, we could choose to put that as part of the job description, that it's a requirement.
You could. You certainly could.
And, and so that goes back to my question. I'm wondering why we chose to place it as an additional desired certification as opposed to us choosing to put it as a required certification?
As, as I just mentioned, I think that the requirement needs to be focused on the required licenser, which is where the lion's share of the work is going to be done.
All right, I, I guess we're going back and forth, because I understand that we could choose to require that as well.
Let me explain it from my way. The necessity to have one individual, we operate as a team. I remember back when the arborist title was put as a slash to the one position, and the reasoning when we were going through, I understand all of that stuff. It is not from my aspect a requirement to have one person designated that. What you as a commission and the public and the people concerned with trees to be concerned with is that we have a team effort and are all the way from anywhere in staff that's involved in these things, that are involved with the preservation of trees and the environment. And the more people cross-trained in there and doing it, that's the importance, instead of designated to one particular person and one particular job, you know, that I don't feel is important. What I feel is important is the, the aspect of having it as a team and having on your team two, three, or four of those people, however you choose which job, which person. Again, one of the ones going forward is not even in these, these four positions that is going for a Zarber certification on staff. So, I don't think you can designate it to one, but we should encourage it for multiple ones within the whole organization. That's, that's the goal.
I, I appreciate that answer, and I certainly value the idea of a team effort. Of course, with most great teams, there's usually someone with a leadership role. The other question I wanted to ask was, there was some talk earlier on the, on a previous agenda item, and actually on this agenda item as well, about some of the increases in development. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about some of the anticipated new property tax revenue that would come as a result of the increased development?
I haven't done any property tax revenue. I mean, perhaps that's something our economic development manager could provide for you. What I could give you, what I gave you was rough numbers of about 350 new units. I mean, I guess ballparking, 5.45 mils, average value, 150,000 taxable, probably that's a, that's a pretty good ballpark, if you do that math.
There, we've got a memo sitting on our desks from, from Miss Lemons, which mentions the city has a portfolio of 10 residential developments in various stages of planning and construction, with the potential of 500 new residents, I guess that's residents, not units, 500 new residents, and $700,000 yearly in new property tax revenue. But that's only residential. I, I understand there's also going to be some additional commercial developments as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Bass?
Thank you, and I do echo the, the mayor's concerns here. Overall, I, I appreciate the initiatives and the goals of this. We do need to improve the permitting process. I do, people that talk to me about how we're a little slower here than other cities, and, and that needs to be improved, and that, that this is one way of doing it. However, by possibly terminating three employees, I'm not very happy with the way this has been handled. You know, it, it was put on the agenda last week with very little preface about the public outcry we'd have, the possibilities of existing employees losing their, their, their jobs. I think that, that should have been in some manner mentioned beforehand, or, 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 or more clear, though, in the backup. And so, with, with that, with that being said, when you're possibly terminating three, three employees, and we're looking to replace them with three new, new, new positions, which certainly could do more inspections, I know at least two of those employees are 15 years plus, one much higher with, with, with Tarpon Springs. Their, their experience and knowledge with the city, something that you just can't hire. I, I realize they may not have state certifications to go out and do certain things at, at present time, but I'm not sure if bringing on brand-new people is the right way to, the right way to go about this. I, I know Mark's given us some reassurances about one particular individual that we're working with them, but nonetheless, having worked in, in, in HR in college, I know, like has been said, that they have to apply for, for these jobs. They're not guaranteed it more than, than anyone else. And so, my question is, if it's the issue that we can't get permits out the door fast enough, perhaps maybe to not go forward with this tonight, would, you know, and I realize it would be additional funds, but hiring an additional inspector or, or one of these positions, would that alleviate some of the problems with getting permits out the door, instead of, you know, essentially changing over the, you know, department?
Well, let me go back to your first comment, because I think it needs to be said. Both, all three employees were spoken to two weeks ago about this reorganization. I did not hear hide nor hair from any of those employees and didn't get any understanding of what, of the email barrage we received in the last 24 hours until the last 24 hours. And for that, I apologize. Had I known that was coming, had I, had those employees come to me and said, here's my concerns, here's my thoughts, I certainly would have sat down and I would have talked to Mr. LaCouris. So, for, for that, I apologize, but honestly, until I got to work this morning, was unaware of any of that.
Well, with, with all due respect, when you're going to be possibly terminating employees that have been here that, 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 that long, and even if there was a one, 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 one single, single, single outcry, and, and I was talking to Mark about this, I think, if, if this was an employee who no one knew about in the sewage department or something, I would still want this to be treated the, the same exact way as a popular employer, somebody who, who, that the public has, 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 has dealt with a lot. So, I think we should know, and it's something that I'm saying you did wrong per se, but that we should know that we shouldn't just put forward a, though, a reorg chart, knowing it's going to affect employees without, I think, doing some work beforehand, and I just don't think two weeks is sufficient time for that. Now, how it's done, you all run your, your departments far better than I, than I could, but I, I just don't think that's very respectful to, to our, our current employees. I'm not sure where to go, but maybe you can talk to my question about hiring somebody additional?
Well, certainly having an additional employee would help. Would that, would that solve all of our problems, one full-time person? If you got the right person, it could help. Would it solve all of our problems? No, I don't believe it will.
So, you, you think the best, the best way for... So you think the best way forward is for these, and not naming who it could be, to have these three new positions available?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I just, go ahead, Mark.
And again, I understand what you're saying, and I understand the fine line of when to bring it up, and I understand where one position right now could temporarily solve the problem. But, you know, it's my job to bring you employees and job duties for employees that's essentially the goal. Now, there's still a good chance, and from the beginning of this thing, the one employee came to me and told me that, you know, he doesn't think he can, you know, make the provision or be involved in it. Also, as you know from the emails and stuff, again, I hate discussing individuals, but you know from the email and stuff, that employee was, you know, talked about pending dates or different things with retirement and stuff. The other individual, again, having to go to individual, but I guess I'm forced to, that person had a six-month temporary license and was doing, and really relieved us with doing...
One year. I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt.
Okay, one year. I'm sorry. And was doing tremendous amount of inspections of that, to do that for. You know, obviously, I hate to get the unfortunate circulated, why, that's not even an issue now and stuff, but it's not, but the person is preparing and setting to take the test to. The third employee has the licenses or has the things and is fully ready to compete for the vision. So one is competing, one was preparing for a year, and hopefully, when they get in there, they'll have a good chance, and one that's admitted for himself close to retirement and stuff, has not to do. So we still have the opportunity to get those three positions on there and go. We have one individual to deal with, and I told you, you've seen what that person has asked for, the different things they asked for and stuff, and I tell you, I think we can get to those places and stuff. And then we end up with a situation where we got those in, but I understand your concerns of the other, the timing and the bringing it, and, you know, I understand that.
I just, you know, I just don't, this is overall, in a perfect world, in a new city, a great way forward. I just don't think it's the right way to go about. That's when you have three employees, two of which, and one of those two being here a very long time, simply have a two-week timeframe where they know their jobs could be cut. And I want to reemphasize what I said about their experience and knowledge with the city, because you can't just hire that away, you know, hire somebody else. Their knowledge and what they bring to the table, having worked for the city for so long, at least personally, I greatly value that. So right now, I would have a hard time moving forward with this, you know, without, it maybe coming back before us with some more structure of what's going to happen with these existing employees, because, you know, they're right now working, they're keeping up the best they can. I mean, I've not reviewed their employee files. I just don't think it's right all of a sudden to say, "Well, the way we're going to fix this permitting problem is by essentially possibly terminating three employees, hiring three new ones." I just think we can go about this a better way. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. First, I'd like to just say that when I read the resolution, when I first saw the resolution Friday afternoon, I feel like I was misled on what was happening here. And nowhere in the resolution that it mentioned a city arborist position whatsoever. So I had no idea, you know, until the emails started coming in late Friday afternoon, all day Saturday, Sunday, Monday, I realized that, you know, it had something to do with the city arborist position. While I know that you say there's, you know, you're not cutting the position totally, you know, they'll have some requirements, and there'll be somebody possibly hired that will have some sort of experience. But again, that was, that's nowhere in the resolution about the city arborist. I know we need help in the, we need some additional help to improve the process when it comes to permitting. Yes, I get phone calls as well. And I just think there's a better way of going about it than how it's being presented to us right now. I thought maybe if we could create a part-time or temporary-type position where we don't have to pay benefits and whatnot, maybe that could help for the time being to take some of the workload off. I mean, I'm not sure you would know best, but I'm also concerned, you know, that three positions we're talking about, these are valued employees. And one of our employees, yes, we're talking about somebody that's put 29 years in with the city, has got 10 years left to retire. 10 years. So I don't know, you know, if the city manager can work something out with him, but for, you know, until he retires, which would be October 1st, there's got to be some compromise here. I just think, what kind of a message is this sending to staff in a whole? How is that going to affect morale when we have somebody that has 10 months left? And the other two employees, too, are very valued, and they do have a lot of experience as well. And I don't want to take away from them either, but like I said, we have somebody here that's 10 months away from retirement, has done an outstanding job for our community, and obviously by the outpouring of concern and support for him. So, you know, in the six years I've sat up here, I've gotten quite a few complaints on staff, employees throughout. I've never gotten one on that one certain employee. I needed to say, I felt I needed to say that. But again, I think that there's got to be another way that maybe we can not vote on this this evening, either defer it, come up with another solution for the time being, speak with, work out something with the one employee that's getting ready to retire, see what we can work out with him, and work out something with the other two and getting them certified. I mean, like I said, there's got to be another alternative right now. So I'm not sure that I could support this resolution at this time.
Again, I think that, from what I hear, and of course, I don't want to jump in before you talking thing, but I think some restructuring can be done with this and looking at maybe a phase for your concern. I just want to make it a point on the retirement in eight months, that's not the case. The one employee I'm sure we're talking about, if you read the email that was sent, the city retirement could go effect immediately. The social security requirement is in May, so, and if you're looking at the 30-year point, then that is June, and then, of course, is October. So there's a bunch of dates, but there's not a retirement date that they got to wait to retire. That could be immediate if you're doing the social security, but I think, I think from hearing the comments so far and the other one, to restructure this and bring this back to you, I think that's the most advisable way to do it, and we'd be glad to do that for you. Again, taking in your comments also, but to not vote and bring it back and restructure it for you.
Thank you.
I was waiting to be recognized, Mayor. I didn't want to jump, just jump in there. No, I mean, I think this is an issue that was brought to my attention Wednesday of last week, and to be honest with you, it totally caught me off-guard. It was by a resident continuously. I can tell you, Mr. Hague, that you have a lot of friends in Tarpon Springs, so in case you didn't already know that. On one hand, a reorganization of this department, in my opinion, is something that's definitely needed. We've talked about it. It's no new topic. We've talked about it. We talk about it every year during budget season. If it's not this department, it's a different department, and that's something that we've definitely implemented. We implemented it last year with the IT department. So I feel as a practice, anytime you can have employees that are cross-trained and can perform, you know, multiple tasks within a department for one singular employee, that's a benefit to the city, that's a benefit to the residents. The biggest concerns that I hear, the biggest complaints that I get, maybe it's because of the business that I am, but it is 100% the amount of time that it takes to either pull a permit or have inspections done, so on and so forth, within the Development Services Department. So on one hand, I'm very much in support of a reorganization of that department to try and get some individuals that are better cross-trained. Not to say that current employees can't get the certifications necessary to be cross-trained. So on one hand, I'm very much in favor of it. I think there's definitely some tweaking that needs to be done. I think it's evident that this commission's not necessarily happy with the way that this was presented to us. I will say, since it seems that we're going to bring this back, I think Commissioner Larson brought up a point that even though it's not required by law to have a certified arborist, I think that that's something that you can guarantee we'd like to have included within the job description. One of the things that I talked to about, or talked to the city manager about is this concern for having any downtime without a city arborist, and Mr. La Cora said that that would not be the case. So I was pleased to know that. The other concern, which is also the white elephant in the room, which everybody continues to dance around, is the issue with Mr. Hague, an employee that's, you know, been with the community for 29 years. There's people who praise you, there's people who, you know, don't praise you. As I'm sure you know, you're never going to make anybody happy, as I say. I mean, 100% of the people happy, no matter what. But nonetheless, you've been with the city for 29 years, you know, you talked about retirement in October. You're very close. I don't think it's respectful or fair to you at all to just cut you loose regardless of, you know, what your past couple of years of performance have been like. So I definitely support coming back with this, trying to restructure it a little bit. And I'd also like to, when we do come back, instead of having, we're going to work with Mr. Hague to find a job for him or not, I'd like to know, you know, that we do have something for him, even if we were to adopt this next week, I'd like to know that we have a position for him and when that position begins and when it ends. Those are my comments. Thank you.
With that, if I might, I'd just like to go to public comments. I'd say that, you know, when you start to get individuals and issues all together, then it gets like what it is now. It's all muddied up. I definitely agree that this whole process should have, could have been done better, you know. But with that, if I can go to public comments and you state your name, address for record, and I will give you up to four minutes, I'll just say this, I'll let you try to wrap up, but if you want, your wrap up is going to take me another four minutes, then I will have to stop you.
Good evening. Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I'm going to say some things tonight, and I hope I have no backlash or retribution of what I'm going to say on me or my properties, because that's why a lot of people say they won't come up here. I want you to know that. First of all, when I was mayor, Mr. City Manager, we passed the city tree canopy ordinance, and we touted the best tree canopy in Pine Ellis County. But yet, the city cut down all these trees and oaks around Spring Viu and Riverside, beautiful expensive palm trees that they didn't replant and dumped them in the city dump and let them die. Expensive trees. So don't say we don't know what we're talking about when we talk about trees and an arborist, okay? Some of us do. That was a slap in my face and to past commissioners and mayors. The second thing is, this should never have come up to the commission. You are not hatchet people. The only people you can cut is your city manager, your attorney, and a few more. You don't kill your good employees. And I'm talking about Richard Hague. All these years, we used him every which way we wanted him, and I went back into my records, and Mr. Joey, you tried this once before when I was mayor, and our commissioners, and Cindy Sanders was on the board, and others, Karen Brayboy, and we said, "No." We contracted with the county, and we did a wonderful job. So if anything needs to be reorganized, let's go see Joey's department. Let him go out in the field with his boots on and his jeans. He doesn't do that and see what the problems are. Get out there and get yourself dirty and work, too. It's that important, and you smile. We're not all pretty people here. Remember something. You are an employee of the citizens of Tarpon Springs, and you, as a commission and mayor, you are an employee of the employees. Think about it. You're here to work for them also, and what came up here tonight is a disgrace, I have a whole speech, and I'm not giving it, because I'm irritated now, is a disgrace and shameful what you're doing to three employees in this city who have served us well. I fought for yous, Mr. City Manager, to be the city manager here. Tonight, I wonder if I did the right thing. I love you, but right now, I don't like you. And you know what I mean by that.
Not the first, it will be the last.
Distant relative, but that's okay. This is wrong. This is wrong. So let's look at his department and say, "What's going on there? What's wrong? Why isn't it being done? Why aren't things taken care of?" You take care of your people, you take care of your family. If it's criminal, if it's drugs, it's something else. But good people, you don't hurt. So wrong. So Joey De Pasqua, get your boots on, get your work clothes on, and get out there and get your fingernails dirty and do the work like the rest of them. I think all right, Bill O'Reilly, I'm reading Killing Jesus. Come on, O'Reilly, let's do a story about killing Tarpon Springs employees and see how they like that. I have never heard of anything like I'm hearing tonight in all my years of government involvement. Yes, you do reconstruct, but you do it at budget time. And if you're going to train three new employees, cross-train them, cross-train these employees and give them the respect that they deserve. This is so wrong tonight. I feel sorry for you. I am ashamed of what's come up here, and don't think the citizens aren't talking about it. They're really talking about it, and they're watching it close. Joey?
Excuse me, sir. I'd like to start right now. You come, some of y'all are new. Clapping, the rest of that, I really think that is disrespectful, the same as it is for booing. Everybody have a chance to say it. If you agree, you have a chance to get up and say, "I agree with the statements he made." So we're not to have any clapping, booing, and all the rest of that. Let's just take care of business, and all of us do what we like to do. Go home sometime.
My name's Richard Hague. I'm senior engineering technician, city arborist. My address is 748 Charlotte Avenue, and as you've heard, I'm a city employee for 29 years. Last Friday, I got the agenda, and when I looked at the agenda and read it, I realized that they had made a mistake in my job title. They identified my job as senior engineering technician, not senior engineering technician slash city arborist. I knew that if I didn't come to the public, let them know that this job was my job, that they would never know, and that possibly the commissioners wouldn't know. I put a letter together, and I went around my friends, neighbors, and I also sent an email to the commission, which I'd like to read for the public if I could. Honorable Mayor Archie, City Mayor Slattery, Vice Mayor Slattery, Commissioners Larson, Terrapanee, and Banther. The staff report, Exhibit A does not identify my correct job title. My job title is senior engineering technician, city arborist, not senior engineering technician. I want to be sure that yourselves and the public are aware that passage of this resolution will terminate my position after 29 years of service. The staff report compares the number of building inspections to the number of engineering inspections. This number, 14 building inspections to one engineering inspection, is misleading. Many engineering inspections do not require formal inspection input into our database, which is where these numbers, I believe, came from. Inspections relating to tree protection, site development, and maintenance of DOT safety signs do not always generate an inspection report that gets recorded in our office. The inspection numbers do not reflect the full function of a senior engineering technician slash city arborist. I am assigned to a public desk in the Development Services Department for four hours a day, where I am at the convenience of the citizens and contractors to answer questions, to help them with construction plans, to do utility locations, and generally to answer any type of tree question they may have. I also meet with residents and homeowners association members to discuss landscape issues and hazard... issues and hazard trees. I'm also a member of the Technical Review Committee, where I provide valuable input regarding utility locations and city history. These functions do also do not require input as an inspection. They are not recorded to justify a number of 14 inspections to one. The staff report states that I have the opportunity to apply and compete for the three new positions. The Development Services Director has written a job description for the new position requiring a minimum license, as he had mentioned, the provisional license, which would be available to anybody who had background in building trades. I am not a contractor. I don't build houses. I don't do plumbing. I have to have five years' experience in one of those trades to apply for a provisional license. So the, implying that I can get this provisional license is totally false. It's impossible for me to get. I don't have five years' experience. I talked to Anthony Mistraccio, as Mr. De Pasqua suggested. I can't even apply for the license without the five years' experience. My background is in civil engineering, surveying, and of course, being an arborist. I would like an opportunity to complete unfinished products, projects such as right-of-way tree inventories, tree hazard identification in the city parks and the cemetery, complete consultations I've had with homeowners associations. I would like to continue doing that until my retirement date. So I am requesting that you, that you reject this resolution. Of course, that's, that would be up to you, and, but I do have a final comment. If you do choose to approve the resolution as submitted, then please allow me to retain my current position until the end of the budget year, October 1st, or at least to May of this year, when I will be eligible for social security benefits. That is an email I sent out to the, to whoever I could think of, and that's, I'm glad to see that you got quite a response. Mr. De Pasqua had made a couple of comments that I'm concerned about. He had mentioned that the city is looking at, in this next coming year, 350 housing units. Just so you know, typical housing inspections, engineering inspections requires, as a bare minimum, five inspections per unit. That's 1,750 engineering inspections. These new positions that are being made are all related to building inspections, not site development. There was a mention that the RO plants may be starting to construct.
If I can get you to wrap up, Mr. Hague, I've been trying to be some of the idiot, since you're one of the individuals that's been affected. And I could tell you still, I don't like dealing with personnel issues here. So if you can kind of wrap that up, I would definitely appreciate it.
Okay, well, I think I've made it my point. Thank you for your attention.
I'm Siobhan Nian. I'm head of the Garden Fairies. And we, the Garden Fairies are the group who did the mural of Mother Mears. So maybe some of you are already acquainted with us. My group loves the environment, loves trees, and loves art. And also, I'm, I've had personal, some personal interactions with Richard because I'm a landscape designer, and I've had some projects in Tarpon Springs. One of, one of which was Grassy Point, and the homeowners association wanted to take some trees down, which I recommended against. And Richard came in, he met me at the site, we went over things, and we were able to save a number of trees. My next-door neighbor tried to take down a mature pine, and I caught them just in time. The tree cutter didn't have a permit. This is a very typical situation that we have in Tarpon. This is besides development. Development is definitely an issue, and we want to retain as many trees as we can. But then there are also people who are unaware of our tree ordinance and are unaware that we value our trees. So we need somebody in that position. I totally understand the reorganization that has been proposed. With the economy improving, thank God, we can all look forward to a bigger tax base. But it doesn't sound like there has been a provision made for the, the time in between you get new employees, they have to be certified. So there's a lag. Now, there might be a creative solution here. I talked to Mark about this, and we had a good discussion. One recommendation could be that. Richard could help guide the way, help possibly help the new people who are coming on board. There could be a transition period. The other thing that we could possibly do is look at a tree committee, forming a tree committee, and I talked to Mark about that. Using the tree ordinance, I found that there are some discrepancies and some, some things that really should be changed. We based ours on Dunedin, and Dunedin's was a really old ordinance, and two years ago, they did an upgrade on their ordinance. So we could look at that. I would also recommend that we have a tree hotline. So if a resident sees a tree being cut down, and they don't want to approach the neighbor because, believe me, I've been in that situation, and it's not fun, when you go up to somebody and say, do you have a permit? And the tree cutter gets really hostile. So that would help. But I, I think we can find some good solutions. And also, my dealings with Richard have been excellent. He really guided me through the process of understanding what the tree ordinance entailed and how much the fines would be. So I could go to clients and say, you know, that's a $5,000 tree. I don't think you want to take that down. So he's always been very pleasant, very helpful, and I would hope that our city would be respectful. And it sounds like everybody, the commissioners are on board and understand the issue. So the last thing I'd like to say is, I've lived in the city for 20 years, and the city's looking great. And you all have done a wonderful job. The streetscaping looks great, and I was on the Lemon Street project, and I love what, how it turned out. And I was on the Sponge Dock Committee initially, had to get off of that because of the mural. But kudos to everybody. You're working very hard. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Beebensee. I reside at 781 Charlotte Avenue. I am also a garden fairy and have worked on the Mother Mears mural. And I think it's safe to say that our group loves Tarpon Springs. Not only likes it, loves it, and wants it to remain beautiful. And I agree with Siobhan, you've done a great job. It's, it's not just one of you or all of you here sitting in front of us. It's been a team effort, and I've noticed, and I've lived here since 2000, and I think our tourists love it too. I would say that I am concerned about the city arborist position. If I'm not mistaken, the resolution would eliminate that as of tonight. There may be some great planning to work as a team and protect our trees, but I don't believe it's outlined in the resolution. The other thing that I'm concerned about is that, and I agree, that we, we have a team effort, but it would be helpful, I think, to the citizens or the residents that if we had one person to go to, to talk to, to call and say, this is my concern. Can your team help, help me out? My other concern is that, I've had the pleasure of knowing Richard Hague for 14 years. I have to say, I haven't had the pleasure of knowing the other two individuals that are affected by this resolution. I know him to be an honorable, dignified person. And I would say that I would hope the city would treat him with, with respect. After all, he's been our servant for 29 years. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Noel Bell. I live also on Charlotte Avenue. In 2001, I came to Tarpon Springs to build my dream house. At that time, there was this big sprawling oak tree on the property that I thought was the ugliest tree I had ever seen in my entire life. I wanted it removed. Mr. Hague denied that request because he saw beauty and value in that tree. He did offer many suggestions as to how the tree could be pruned and reshaped, and I listened to him, and I took him up on his suggestions and had the tree taken care of. Now, I have the loveliest tree in the neighborhood, which I'm sure has added value to my property. If it hadn't have been for his dedication, that beautiful tree would have been lost. So I object to the ordinance because I really believe that Tarpon Springs needs a certified arborist in their Development Services Department. Thank you.
I'm Craig Frill, 300 South Florida Avenue, Tarpon Springs. I'm here on behalf of Richard Hague. Most people know him as Rich. He, as you well know, has been an employer for 29 years. He only has a few months before he retires, and I think, in my opinion, he should stay as an employee until, until October. What this gentleman said back here sounded good. There's no doubt he has the interest of Tarpon Springs at heart. But one thing that was not on that paperwork, and that's the human element, the despair, the problems that happen to people when they lose their job unexpectedly. Mr. Hague has a wealth of information about Tarpon Springs, the utilities. He's the only, correct me if I'm wrong, are you the only arborist certified in, in the city? And I don't understand why we would let a certified arborist go and then hire somebody else hoping that they can become certified. That's, that's a question I have. But I think all of you'll agree with me, as government employees, it's a thankless job. People will not thank you for the work you do out here. I know, I'm a retired policeman out of Atlanta, 27 years. So I know how thankless it can be. This man has spent 29 years, most of his adult life, serving the citizens of Tarpon Springs. And this distinguished board, in the 10 years I've lived here, you have done tremendous job of overlooking our best interests. So he is not only an employee, but he is also a Tarpon Springs citizen. So I hope you look at him as a citizen and do the same thing for him as you've done for everyone else. Please, from what I understand, his position is, been funded through October, is that correct? Okay, so please, just stay with what you have on the books now and keep him as an employee until October. Thank you.
My name's Michael Moore. I reside at 631 Kenneth Way, Tarpon Springs. And I just heard about this today, so I didn't have time to really understand everything that's in the resolution. To me, it was an ethical matter, and I want to say I'm very proud of each and every one of you all, what you stood up for and said, that the ethics amounted to more than the business side of it. And, and that's what, that's what's important. So you guys did a good job in what you said tonight, everyone. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Steve Martin. I live at 777 Charlotte Avenue, and I've only been in the city about three years. I really like it here. People are super. Richard lives across the street from me, great guy. I don't know him that well, but I've asked him to look at some trees for me. He'll come over anytime. He gave me advice on them, and I asked him about cutting them down or getting them pruned, and he said, whenever I ask him, he does it. And I don't really pretend to know what, everything that's going on here about the budget and all that. I caught some of it. But I can see that he's a good employee. He's an honorable person. He has a lot of experience, and like the one gentleman said, I don't know why you'd get rid of somebody with all that experience to get somebody that's learning the job. And, and I really think that you should take like a head count right now so that the people here can see who's for him and who's against him, because I would really like to know. I mean, everybody's made different comments. I mean, it doesn't have to be binding, but I would just like to see who I think is an honorable person and who's not here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rich Manley. I live in 744 Charlotte Avenue. And I'd like to apologize to the mayor and council that I clapped. I was just overwhelmed with the, what she had to say. I've only been here two years, but Rich has helped me in numerous ways, given me information on pruning trees, the condition of my trees, the property line, what I can and can't do, and trimming bushes. He's been a wonderful neighbor, and I think he's a wonderful citizen for the Tarpon Springs. And I hope that you would keep him. Thank you.
My name is Jacob Carr. My address is 146 Cleveland Place. I've grown up in Tarpon my whole life, and I hope to be a longtime resident. So it's good to see the, the support from the city for one of their own. One of the questions, I think there's a few questions that need to be asked during, during this process, is how long is the goal to fill the positions for those next three new positions that the city's planning on doing? If the resolution's passed, do those three employees automatically lose their jobs right away? Or is it going to be a timing process of how long it takes to hire? If that's the case, are those employees going to come in and work every day, trying to figure out, am I going to lose my job today? Or is it going to be tomorrow? Giving them a timeframe of when the positions are going to be filled is something that might be a wise decision to do, and just saying, you have an opportunity to fill a position, we're not sure when that's going to happen, just out of respect for your current Looking at this also is if there's going to be layoffs of positions and then a rehire of new positions, the question would be, is it going to create a pretty big lapse of inspections to be done? If there's a need and a desire right now to do the inspections, if you're going to miss employees for three weeks of inspectors, what's going to happen in those three weeks of inspections that need to be done? These are just a couple of questions that came to my mind when Mr. De Pasqua was presenting on the subject. One thing that Richard brought up, I thought was a really good point, is that they said to have an opportunity to apply for the temporary licenses, but do they all have the qualifications to apply for the temporary licenses? Part of my question would be, is, is there an opportunity to redo the current job descriptions and cross-train with what they're able to be cross-trained with, with their current experience and work history and so on? That you have three positions, you want them all cross-trained in the same positions, but you may have a qualified candidate in two of the positions that have excellent experience, but the third, he might not specialize in or nor have the five years' experience to apply for the temporary license. But you're losing out on those two specialized positions, for instance, with that situation. And then the second, one of the last things I just want to ask is with the salaries, it was projected that, it was going to be a salary reduction for the city. The ultimate goal is to hire the best person for the job. There's a $7,500 savings or something along those lines that was stated. If you have the best people applying for the job, I would imagine you're going to be paying, probably paying the highest salary out of that too. With the current positions, as you saw in your backup data, you saw that they're all, for the most part, I think, two out of the three are going to be making less. So you're asking your current employees if they can be rehired, you're putting more work in their plate, and you're asking them to reduce their salary by a significant amount also. I guess what I'm looking at is, if I was in this situation as an employee, how would I feel? And I would ask you to feel that way also. It's, I appreciate all your comments and the support from Mr. Hague. And the other employees too, and that's where it comes down to, is as a city resident myself, supporting the other city residents that are also our employers here in the city. Thank you for your time.
My name is Bill Kledakis.
My name is Bill Kledakis, and I live at 215 West Lemon Street, Tarpon Springs. I know Mr. Richard Hague for about 30, 35 years, and his wife. Real fine individuals. But I'm here to say a couple of good words for him and tell you a little story about safe pay. I wasn't born in this country, but this is my country. I was born overseas during the war. That's all I knew when I got here. Almost nine years old, and I was in the first grade and didn't speak English. And I always remember the Boy Scout oath. Trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, cheerful, thrifty. That's Mr. Hague. And that's what I worked under throughout my career. And I had 40 years with the government, all the way to the Pentagon. 10 years in the Pentagon, diplomatic security. So, what I got to say is, in 1967, Disney came into Orlando, and I got cut. And I had to go find a job, and I had a family and everything. And what happened was, I had a choice. Take safe pay for a year or go look for a job on my own, which I did. I took safe pay when I looked for a job. I put in for MacDill and got that position. And I worked my way up to different career fields. And that worked out for me very good. So, I don't know if you guys, the city does that, but the city manager mentioned, this is the team. I was on the Air Force team. So, what I got to say is, you got to talk it over and work this man with all this experience and trustworthy, one of the best employees there is. I would highly recommend him to... Or if y'all could give him a safe pay and let him do what he's doing. And train somebody, 10 months to train him. But, so, like I said, I went all the way to the Pentagon, which I got hired in for 10 years, counterterrorism. Okay, so that's... I'm ready to go back. Thank you very much.
I'm not a resident of Tarpon Springs. My name's Bob Hague. That's my brother. I want to thank all you people for coming out. I'm retired from Verizon. Forty... I have 34 years. I lived here in this area for 40 years. I lived in Tarpon. I live in Newport Ritz now. I know my brother since he's been here for 29 years. I believe when he took this job, he took it as an engineering position, surveying. And essentially Joey did, he just accepted the arborist job. And you can hire an arborist, but you can get an arborist that loves trees. He loves his trees. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Joe Musio, 1319 Gulfy Woods Lane. Mr. Hague, I assume that you do want to retire, sir?
I would ask you, Mr. Musio, if you would make some comments.
Okay, well, I'm a little confused if Mr. Hague wants to retire or not. I hear conflicting stories. I want to thank the city manager. Based on my conversation today, he was very willing to work with Mr. Hague one way or another. So, thank you, Mr. Manager. I also want to thank the board here tonight, because I think the board asked some great questions regarding the scenario and the issues behind this matter. I do have a few questions that came up that I don't think was brought up. I know one of the three employees is qualified to continue in the position. Am I correct there?
He has the license.
He has the license for the inspections. My recommendation would be that if he is qualified, then I would say that he would be the best man for the position, knowing the fact that he knows the city inside and I know one of the individuals that are in question failed the test, and he had a provisional license. Now, does his provisional license expire once he's failed the test?
Yes.
It expires. And how many times can an individual get a provisional license? Only once, or is it multiple times?
But you can take the test multiple times.
But you can't get a provisional license more than once?
I don't believe so, but...
We'll find an answer out for you, because the clock is still running while you...
I understand. I just think those are valid questions, because if he's able to get another provisional license, you know, this gives him a little bit more time to study and take the test again. And my last question is really, you know, how many inspections are actually pending for the city right now? I didn't think that number was brought up. Okay. Those are my questions, and I thank you for your time. And I hope that, again, that you continue to work with Mr. Hague and that things will end very amicably. Thank you.
If there's anybody else that would like to speak, if you can kind of come forward. So, I know some people like to be last.
Chris Herbowski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I purposely did not call you over this, Mark, because I knew that your phone would be blowing up and you'd be very busy explaining this. And I heard what you were saying to other people. I was getting it secondhand. Normally, I would not go with that, but I knew that your time would be tight. The thing that surprises me the most is that you would be surprised at this sort of backlash. That's the thing that's got me puzzled. I mean, when I looked at the backup material, the flow chart clearly shows slash arborist in the current, and then later, in the new one, it's not there. So, that's why people are concerned about that. And then, it says preferred, where clearly, as Commissioner Larson mentioned, we could ask that it be required. So, that could have been put in there, and that would have saved you a whole lot of grief, not to mention, you know, the way that you, you know, handled the other part of this with the employees. Again, it's puzzling to me that there would be any surprise at all. I mean, to put this on, it's just... So, I'd like to take it a step further. I mean, if really there's going to be this influx of more building inspections needed, that means more revenue for the city. Why wasn't this discussed in the July 30th budget meeting? I mean, that would have been a good time to bring it up. Hey, we got all this extra money. When we're talking about repositioning all these other positions, why not this then? How could this not have been foreseen back in July when we were discussing the budget? And so, again, it's just puzzling to me, again, that the job description, arborist should be required, in my opinion. I believe that Mr. Terapini and Mr. Larson mentioned that. Also, wetland delineation. We could also get these things. It would be nice to also have someone who is certified as a hydrologist. And these things would benefit the city, you know? So, if we're going to have extra money, perhaps, as Mr. Banther suggested, let's get an extra position. It's great to do the cross-training, and I really, I agree, that's a great thing to do. But jack-of-all-trades, master-of-none. It's good to have an expert, an expert in their field, so that you can turn to that expert, to the pro, when you really need it. Doesn't look like this resolution is going to pass tonight, and I am pleased that that is most likely the case. Again, it's just that there's so many puzzling parts of this. I guess I'm going to leave it there, and hopefully, we'll get to talk about this later. Thank you.
Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. As president of the Friends of the Ankleot, a recognized organization within the city, I request and expect 10 minutes of time.
If you might request that, but you will get four.
Excuse me, and if any objections to that, I have three members of the Friends of the Ankleot who will give up their time to give me the allotted two minutes per member that they will split, which will give me the 10 minutes of time. So, if you need confirmation from them, I have 10 minutes, please?
No.
Mr. Herbowski already spoke.
No, I'm talking about, excuse me, Carl Waggonfer, Brian Crisato, and Wendy Crisato. So, do I have my 10 minutes?
I would suggest that you start speaking, sir.
Okay, well, I just want to know if I have 10 minutes, because if I have four minutes, I have to speak fast.
What I would like to do is, at the proper time, we bring some more clarification as to speaking for the organization. There are some thoughts in there about giving up your time.
Well, y'all know, y'all voted on it, so...
And we can vote again on a lot of things, Mr. Delakis.
So, do I have 10 minutes to speak?
If you start talking, I would appreciate that.
Well, it affects what I'm going to present. So, first off, as president of the Friends of the Ankleot, I would like to read for the record, support for the following proposal. I propose that the Friends of the Ankleot River take a position of opposition to the proposed elimination of the city's arborist position and layoff of the incumbent staff member. It puts at risk the city's designation of Tree City USA, which requires someone to be legally responsible for the care and management of the community's trees. This may be a professional forester or an arborist, an entire forestry department, or a volunteer tree board. The city has no volunteer board, and the arborist position is being eliminated. The requirements for the inspector positions list arborist certification only as additional desired certification as required certification. It weakens the city's ability to enforce tree protection provisions of the Land Development Code by replacing an experienced arborist with inspectors having other primary job responsibilities. Experience and institutional knowledge of our incumbent city arborists cannot be immediately replaced by someone who's only recently studied a book and passed an online test. If the steady increase in construction permitting continues, as expected by staff, the revenues from the permit fees should be able to fund the additional staffing necessary to perform the required inspections. If the permit fees cannot support the required level of staffing, then the fees may be artificially low and should be looked at being increased. That being said, as the official statement, I would like to now go forward on some things that were mentioned and discussed in this meeting, and also go over a few things that are in the staff report. First off, in page one of three, down in the description here of the staff report, where it says recommendations, in paragraph one, I'm just going to jump down here. In effect, the new development inspector positions will become multipurpose inspectors with an emphasis on building inspections. Okay. So, the emphasis is on building inspections. Now, historically, let's look at this. '08, when all this started going down the toilet, and we had to tighten up the belts. We knew at some point this was going to come around, and we were going to have to reach that rubber band stretching point to bring some new people in. Yes, we have had complaints for years about permitting and inspections, and we've also had complaints about how people were handled. So, upfront, very logical, very logical. And to be honest with you, I really don't have a problem with having three inspectors if we need them. Budget for them. Maybe leave one vacant till you have those people that you say are best qualified. My biggest thing, and one of the things that we feel, and that's what I'm feeling, is the lack of focus on any environmental tree, wildlife, and the corresponding issues that come with what an arborist brings to the table. They bring a different mindset to the table. A building inspector is going to come, he wants to check to make sure you've got your wires right, your traps are properly placed, they're properly gravitational-wise, they're going to look for the proper studs in the walls. That's their focus. And when... If you've got as many permits as you're going to want to be permitting, they ain't going to have time to take the time to stop somewhere to visit places that need to be looked at on another scope, the arborist's scope. Now, so I want to go over a few comments to kind of give you some simple contra-observations. Mark said, need for jobs. I agree. I totally agree. You say it's built into protecting the environment. Well, having that as an additional job description allows too much flexibility in hiring. You're going to want to get people to handle permits. So, to be honest with you, me, the simplest way to do this? Go ahead and create your three inspectors. I see on your graph table, you've already got, from current, the construction engineering inspector, he should already be under the supervisor inspectors. And if you need more building development inspectors, hire it. But what I would propose to you, and I think it would bring you some clarity, instead of getting rid of the arborist position, you need to create a permanent arborist environmental specialist position. It's about time. If you've got all these developments going on, you need someone who can go out and do the surveys, who can check to verify when you get species reports that this is valid. And if anything, when you have new people come into an organization, look what they're talking about with the Bucs. Oh, Lovie's come in, they're going to evaluate everybody and see who's good and that. I agree with that. You've got talent on here. You should keep him as an arborist in training and hire an intern under him so he can pass that knowledge on. So, when he retires, you've got an experienced arborist. Now, I don't want to talk about the people, because I want to talk more about the specific stuff. You can have one of those positions as an arborist, so you don't have to have all three of the developmental inspectors arborists. Because you know what? If you hire somebody with all of those certifications and an arborist, too, Commissioner Banther's right, you're going to be paying them more. I mean, Commissioner Terapini, I think, mentioned, or both of you guys mentioned that. Let me look at my notes. You remember. You want the best, you're going to be paying the best. Not the $51,000, closer to the $65 or stuff. So, that figure of saving $7,500 out the window, because when you get people who come and they say they ain't taking $51 for all the work you say you got them to do, you're going to be paying them $65. Because we've heard that before, we don't pay enough. Can y'all see that? See all that green there? Can y'all see all that green? See all that green there? 12 acres. 12 acres. Joey was talking about it. Keystone Estates. I don't remember what date it was, but it was proudly approved, I believe unanimously, by this commission. What the commission doesn't see, but our arborist does. See this? That's a site plan. See all those... See all those little Xs? Trees to be removed. Trees to be removed. Trees to be removed. Who's going to check on all that? Someone who's inspecting buildings? Just to show you what the immensity of this is. Landscape plans. See all that? See all those buildings over those crossed-out trees? And then see around the perimeter, a few little, like, round tree symbols? Lots six thousand to ten thousand square feet require four trees per lot, one hundred and forty trees for replacements, and the retention pond tree requirements are twenty-six. Now, if you go to page LA two, they're going to be removing, get this, twelve thousand seven hundred and eleven inches of trees. Twenty-five inches or greater, one hundred and forty-five inches. Then there's fifteen to twenty-five, eight to fifteen. Twelve thousand and seven hundred inches. And you know what they're going to replace? Two hundred and forty-nine. So, there's a net loss of twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-two. Okay? So, when I hear that protecting trees and the environment, it's an institutional involvement, the organizational structure is in place, and we have a track record of doing this, I have to take a big gasp and say, where? So, we need an arborist or an environmentalist position in our development services department. Mr. Pascal mentioned the Banyans. Anybody want to know where the Banyans are? That's a vague, long-ago term. Y'all know where the Ace Hardware is and where the Old Wind Dixies used to be, and all that vacant land back there, and there's only, like, four condos on Morgan Street, and all the rest is all vacant. They denuded all the trees back there? That's the Banyans. It's still sitting there, years later. Because developers come in here and promise the world, trees to them are a nuisance. You know what? We talk about our climate change and the carbon, you know what? Take a deep breath. We can breathe. You know why? Trees and plants. We indiscriminately go around chopping our trees and our plants down, and then we say, well, we need to restrict our carbon usage. So, do your part and keep an arborist on staff as a full-time person, and have Mr. Hague train them till they become fully functional within the city knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you for your enlightening speech.
You're welcome.
Are there any public comments? Well, city manager suggested that we defer this. I think that it's a great idea, I say to Mr. Hague, I don't like having to call employee's name. I don't like to deal with these type of issues. Highsight, twenty-twenty, say that definitely there's a lot of other things that could have been done. We're looking for a better resolution to, play on words, I guess, to a difficult situation. It's always difficult when we're talking about reorganizations. This is one that, I don't know, but I would ask that if we could have a motion.
I make a motion to defer.
Second. Just let me say before it goes just to answer some of the questions. Obviously, some of the things that have been suggested by this group, by the ones who've called me, there are many different ways to resolve that and deal with it, deal with Mr. Hague. In fact, in tonight's meeting, from Commissioner Banther bringing up, there might be a way, and we may need to spend a little extra money. That was one way I had thought of resolving it. There are other ways, and pretty simply, it's going to be pretty easy, I think, to come back and bring the solution to meet what the people are talking about. But I want to emphasize that those were in effect either. I just can't sit and negotiate on the phone and negotiate in public and talk about what arrangements we're going to make for a person to separate and do it in this forum. But there were considerations and several different ways that we could get Mr. Hague to where he was going to be and reach his retirement, and I will bring back one of those specifically to you when we come back with the differences of reorganization. So, it is out there in that case. Also, it's difficult on the other ones, but I can assure you, many of those different ways can go with the other ones. These are new positions with such new job structures, you've got to remember there are labor and personnel rules. You can't assure that an employee who's already licensed presently, you're advertising a job, that they can get it. But obviously, you know that if they've been here, and you know how they work, they have the licenses, and they compete against everybody, they've got a big foot forward. But I can't sit here and tell you, that's why I made the clarification, because there would be no need to advertise. But you can't change a position that much and put the different things without properly advertising. So, people have to understand that there's different labor considerations and laws that I have to deal with, where I can't make those assurances. Well, one's a shoe-in to do it and stuff. Well, then there'd be no part of the competitive process that I have to do with a drastic change in the position that it requires. So, I can't come out there and say that. But it's obvious, licensing, experience with the city, who is going to beat you out? Is there somebody to beat you out there? Theoretically, it could be, but I'll just leave that as it may with that. And obviously, the other employee who's been working at things, hopefully, we're going to have some success with that, and that person's involved with the job. So, all these different individuals that shouldn't be really talked about, the people are talked about in public, there are things that can be done, and, you know, we pretty much revealed most of it and stuff. And when we come back with another plan or some alternate plans, when I bring those back, I think we can resolve all those issues that you have said as a board, and the concerns, and the fair treatment of our employees, and have that out there. So, I see no problem with doing this and coming with this organizational plan with some different nuances to it that'll satisfy those things of the board and who the public who's contacted me and us and everybody this week by phone and by being here. So, I look forward to bringing that back to you.
Well, thank you, and I think that the part you talked about, about fair treatment to our employees and understanding that we do value our employees that have been here with us, and if one good thing came out of this with Hague is that, you know, there's at least a few people in town that like you. With that roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Though it's yes or defer, correct?
This is to defer.
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. We now go to our next item, which is miscellaneous, and that's item number sixteen, discussion. Board member that has not completed oath or of office and affidavit of training, oath that's been resolved?
No. And I don't know, I'm bringing this for it before you. I have no idea where to go from here. There's nothing else unless you want us to camp out twenty-four hours somewhere and try to get this done. But I put this on because we need to take some action, and they're your boards, and they're your decision, and I don't know what else to do or any other method to try to, that the clerk has done or that we have tried to do to contact and get this person to do.
Could I suggest this, is that we send him a letter saying that he has from town next meeting to either submit his letter of resignation, or the board would take action for his removing him? I mean, that's, you know, that's...
That's why I put this on for discussion item, to not be voted on tonight, to do.
Commissioner Terapini?
My question is, so he hasn't completed his oath of office, right, in his public records training, but does he come to the meetings?
I understand he's been...
Like, they meet, what, they meet once a month, right?
Well, remember with that board, you know, depending on meetings sometimes, just missed months.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, last month...
I think he's been the ones in the last couple of months. I'm not sure what the exact, exact dates of it and stuff.
And the reason I ask that is because if he's, you know, actively participating on the board, you know, as rude as it may be not to respond to the city clerk or to you or whatever the case may be, if it's just, you know, completing some training, but he is, but he does participate in the board, then I certainly think, you know, we give him a little bit more time. But I'm good with what the mayor said.
Well, and that's why I was, I was hoping that he was coming.
Yeah.
And that's why we want to, don't, I don't really want to just take him off the board.
Yeah.
But at some point in time, it's not that much to sign the affidavit saying that you have, you know, done the little training or look at the video, and then to be sworn in, you know? I don't know what the problem is. I haven't...
Can I just add? I would be more than willing to come to, and I have, I've sworn in people to drive through, whatever's convenient for them, I'll stay after, as long as I know that he's going to be in attendance at that meeting and with the confirmation. I have no problem in that, you know, if we can have some contact, then we can make some kind of arrangement.
I've reached out to everybody I know to try to get him to contact us, and I don't know...
I mean, in addition to what we've done with all the members, in addition, we've sent a certified letter, which he signed for. We've also, I've left an additional email and phone message most recently, and the city manager has also left a phone message and email that it was going to be discussed this night, a letter.
It just seems very out of character for him. I don't, it's not, so I, that was my, I agree with that, send him the letter where it's a definite, you know, registered mail, whatever we do to make sure he gets it, that, you know, you do X by this date or this happens, because this is not somebody, this is probably one of the last people on any of our boards I would ever expect to have this issue with. So, just, you know, one last shot to try and get him in and, you know, see what happens.
That concludes our agenda. Looking for the chief. Maybe it got too late for him.
No comments.
City manager?
No, sir.
Madam clerk?
No comments.
Commissioner Terapini?
No comments, ma'am.
Vice mayor?
No comments.
Commissioner Bousman?
No comments.
Commissioner Lawson?
I've said enough.
With that, we'll adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-two, looks like.